Welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month. Any recommendations made on rezone requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Once the consent agenda has been approved, those agenda items have been approved and members of the public are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward, make a statement, or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anybody addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. And as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 or will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. We are going to go ahead and proceed with the reading of the consent agenda items. Item number one is an approval of the March 3, 2010 minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is Platts. Item number three is a rezon from the RS2 Residential District to the S Institutional District for Allowed Uses at 1208 West 28th Street. Item number four is a rezon from the RS2 Residential District in the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to the RA1 Residential District for Allowed Uses at 5700 East Red Oak Drive. Item number four is a rezon from the Berry Plan Development District to the RS2 Residential District for Allowed Uses at the northwest corner of South Monticello and West 26th Street. Item number six is rezon from the RD Residential District to the RS2 Residential District for Allowed Uses at the northeast corner of South Dubuque Avenue and East 41st Street. Item number seven is a rezon from the S Institutional District to the RD Residential District and RC Recreational Conservation District for Allowed Uses at 6101 East 49th Street. Item number seven, no, excuse me. Item number eight is a rezon from the RA1 Residential District to the RC Recreational District Conservation District for Allowed Uses at South Minnesota Avenue and West 85th Street. Item number nine is a major amendment to subareas A and B of the Summer Hill South Plan Development District to revise boundary lines of the subareas at South Bonson Avenue and East 57th Street. Item number 10 is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow an electronic message board in a residential zoning district at 5500 East 57th Street. Item number 11 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District to construct a building on a lot greater than one acre in size at West 41st Street and South Ellis Road. Item number 12 is a final development plan and a minor amendment in Sub Area A of the Red Rock Park Plan Development District to construct a convenience store with gas pumps and a car wash at 5400 East Arrowhead Parkway. And item number 13 is a final development plan in Sub Area D Prairie Hills South Plan Development District to construct an office building at South Pinnacle Place and West 69th Street. Are there any objections from the audience to any items listed on the consent agenda? Any objections from the Planning Commission members to any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda. Consent agenda has been motioned and approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second that. Motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion to approve the regular agenda. Item number 14 is a rezon from the RS2 Residential District to the O Office District for Allowed Uses at 1816 South Summit Avenue. Staff, report.
My name is Steve Randall with the planning staff. I'll be representing this item this evening along with others. Now, the application is for a rezoning. The project name is called Orthotic and Prosthetic Specialties Incorporated. They are the owners of the property. In terms of the rezoning, they're proposing to expand their business and would like to provide additional parking. So they are looking to acquire the property directly to the south of their office building at 26th and Summit for that purpose, to provide additional parking. They have provided a concept plan for their proposed development of parking at that location. As we look at the compatibility chart and look at the surrounding uses, which are primarily residential, we have a compatibility rating of four indicating that the new zoning district is generally compatible with the adjacent zoning districts. Traffic from higher intensity districts should be directed away from those lower intensities. And the building elements and scale should be consistent with the surrounding proposed and existing developments. So there really shouldn't be that much difficulty. What we're looking at is the proposed use for office parking, and we'd be looking at approving the zoning for that purpose. It's approximately just, the property being rezoned is about a tenth of an acre. And there are two lots involved. The property owner will have to combine those lots for the purpose of getting a building permit and also go through a process of review with building and zoning plan checks. We are in the urban core as far as land uses go, and we have full access out onto Summit Avenue, but one-way access from 26th Street. They are close to the south side of Campus Park and the southeast corner of the University of Sioux Falls campus and one block north of the Southeast Behavioral Health Center and Augustana College. So they're in a general service area anyway. Surrounding residential uses are well-kept. It's a good neighborhood. And in the process of reviewing their plan, we noted in the report and to the applicant that they would have to address some issues with their parking setbacks and landscaping. And so now, up until as latest today, they've been working on that with Building Services and have provided a new plan. And I've included that in the information packet. You did not have a copy of that either for the addendum or the information packet itself. So I'll just quickly review that. It's on your screen. And for the viewers at home, they are indicating the existing conditions, which show existing parking on the north side of the building and an expanded parking lot to the south onto the area that's being rezoned. They'll have to review that for approval with Public Works for the engineering department access out onto 26th Street and also with zoning for the landscaping requirements and the building addition requirements for parking. That they intend to do. It appears that the plan is workable as far as the concept is concerned. As I mentioned, they will have to go through a review for the required parking and for the setbacks and screening. Proposed building expansion plan indicates that the possibility of variances may come into play, although they're working hard not to have to do that in the future. So this new zoning district is generally compatible with existing adjacent zoning districts. Offices traffic is confined to a corner lot on a collector's street, so we're not really impacting the traffic conditions in the area. The building concept elements and scale are consistent with the adjacent residential properties. And in order to make this project more compatible, the applicant is making an effort to meet the zoning requirements for setback landscaping and parking. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. We've had a couple calls, but for information only. And that concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions of staff?
Madam Chair, Steve, it calls for a building this size to require 58 parking spaces. It says it's got room for 36. They will need to go to the Board of Adjustments for a tweaking of the parking spaces?
That is possible.
When will that take place? Will it go into the Board of Adjustments?
I suspect as soon as they can if the applicant is here to respond to that this evening. I'm not sure what their schedule is.
Depending on how they were to view that, would that, could that affect our decision here tonight?
No. It's a separate issue. In order to obtain a building permit, they have to meet the parking requirements. You are simply looking at the proposed use as an expansion of an existing office.
Thank you, Steve.
Any further questions for staff? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here tonight?
My name is Craig Howg of Howg Construction. I am the petitioner. I'm sorry, I live at 717 East 61st Street in Sioux Falls. I'm the petitioner for the proposed site. Basically, what we're doing is we've been able to obtain the property to the south of the building, and it's going to allow us to have better and easier access and parking for the people to use the orthotic and prosthetic building. Right now, it's fairly snug getting in and out of there, so we have no plans to add on to the building now. We just want to increase the parking and get some of our off-street parking to be in a parking lot so we can get rid of that off-street parking. It just may get easier for our clients to come into the building.
Any questions of Craig?
Craig, just briefly, you're the builder?
Yeah, I'm the one that's going to put this together, yeah.
You're going to put this together?
Yep.
It just indicates that a building this size requires 58 parking sp- What you're doing is certainly an improvement. I understand that. I support it. It looks like you're not going to quite have enough parking spaces to meet the zoning requirements for a building this size, which require you to go to the Board of Adjustments, I believe. Is that how you understand it?
No, I thought we had more than enough parking spaces for a building this size. I could be mistaken, but if I need to go to the Board of Adjustments, that's not a problem. But I haven't been informed as of this point that we are short on parking spaces.
Maybe Steve will come back up. I'm just reading under parking that parking in the O Office is 58 spaces for a building area of 11,452. The concept indicates a total of 36 spaces. Parking is not allowed in the crowded front yard, and the applicant will have to apply to the Board of Adjustments for a variance of parking. I just want to be sure you understand that and when that might or might not take place.
I can clarify. That was with the original concept plan, and maybe you could put that back up on the screen. The original concept plan showed the building addition, and that was the square footage I was referring to for the parking requirements. And the parking that they were showing on that plan required the Board of Adjustment action. What I believe the petitioner is saying now is that they don't intend to make that addition at the present time. So the parking that they are providing then will meet the requirements of the existing building.
So the building won't be 11,452 square feet?
No, it will not, correct.
Sorry, Steve probably said that, and it just went completely past.
That's okay.
Thank you, Craig.
You bet.
So as it stands now, Craig, you're going to about triple what they've got now for parking. Is that about right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
I'll look for Commission action on item number 14.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval of item 14.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll look. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item number 14 carries. Item number 15 is a major amendment to Sub Area A at the Summit Edition Plan Development District to add off-sale alcohol as an allowed land use at 1030 North Minnesota Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Dave Loveland, and I will be presenting this and other items this evening. The application before you is submitted by Misty and Mike Werkamp, who own Munchy's convenience stores in town. They're looking to add an additional site, which requires at this location a major amendment to the subarea regulations that have been previously established. The general location of the site is at 1030 North Minnesota Avenue. The area in question is about one acre in size, and the existing land use is a already constructed multi-tenant municipal building. When we researched some of the previous action on this, on the construction and the development of the subarea regulations for this area, the Plan Development District itself was created by City Council action in January of 2004. And when the applicant had initially applied for the rezoning, he had included off-sale alcohol as an allowed land use. Staff supported the application at the time, however, due to an objection from one of the neighbors. At the time, the applicant struck the off-sale liquor as one of the allowed land uses in order to be able to move forward at that moment. And so because of that, the applicants were advised at this time to speak to their neighborhood concerning the proposed plans, and they were informed by staff that there had been at least one opponent in the past, and that the applicant should now be prepared to inform the Planning Commission of their discussions with the neighborhood. My understanding is that they have contacted their neighbors by posting flyers, and as far as our office is concerned, we haven't been contacted by any of the neighbors voicing any opposition to this request. The applicant's also been advised to discuss the establishment of a security management plan with the Community Service Division of the Police Department, and I believe they've made contact with that organization and have moved forward on it. But because the subject application conforms to the comprehensive plan and is consistent with land uses along the Minnesota Avenue corridor, we are recommending approval of the major amendment with the subarea regulations as indicated in your staff reports. That concludes this staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions of Dave? None? Thanks, Dave. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Come on forward.
My name's Mike Werkamp, 1122 Connor Trail.
Okay. Any questions for Mike?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Werkamp, did you talk to the neighbors and any opposition?
Yeah, we posted, you know, Munchy's open soon. Actually, we're opening a store tomorrow with the, just a regular convenience store with this conditional whatever to try to get the beer and liquor to be a more full convenience store, and we never heard whatever. I have the next-door neighbor recommendation right here that he says we are very happy and enthused to have Munchy's as a neighborhood and as our neighbor. You know, we've talked to everybody in the strip mall, our neighbors, and there's, we have no objection. We haven't had anybody come up and complain.
Any other questions of Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? No? Seeing none, I'll look for Commission action on item number 15.
Madam Chair, I move to approve item 15 with the conditions as stated in the staff report.
I second that motion. Item's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number 15 carries. Item number 16, conditional use permit in the C4 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales, display, rental, and repair at 2707 South Carolin. Staff?
The applicant for this is Dewane DeKiper, and the owner is Craig Lloyd, Lloyd Companies. The applicant is requesting approval to allow for motor vehicle sales, display, and rental, and to establish a motor vehicle repair shop. And this would be for Dakota Classics. It'd be a classic car dealership, actually, display and sale of classic cars and also including motor vehicle repair. It's a 1.5-acre site. The SHAPE Sioux Falls designation is regional commercial. I think you all have been out in that area. It's an area that continues to evolve with regional commercial development. And so the proposed development is compatible on all sides. If you discount the interstate distance, there will be residential development to the west, but if you look at that development that's proposed over there, they have included a number of berms and landscaping trees and things, and plus the distance of the interstate, we really don't feel that there will be a problem in establishing compatibility between the proposed use and those future residential uses. Motor vehicle repair shop shall provide an adequate number of parking spots to store the cars and shall provide appropriate areas for the storage of parts and materials which should be screened from view. The applicant is proposing to locate all of their facilities indoors at the proposed location. And a floor plan has been provided to show how those facilities would be laid out. It is actually a multi-tenant building. The drywall company occupies the east end of the building, and will continue to occupy that part, but the other aspects of the motor vehicle display, sales, and repair are indicated on the floor plan. Those uses should be designed in a manner that encourages, according to the conditional use requirements, display towards the lot interior. The applicant has said that all of the display vehicles will be indoors, that they are not planning to provide display of vehicles outside. So the current loose land uses are appropriate and compatible. The existing corridor development is a suburban strip. Accessibility is full access onto South Carolin, and the subject property is located outside the water source protection overlay district as far as the storage of hazardous materials. However, the property is in the floodplain, and the building floor elevation is actually six feet below the flood elevation. Now, for an addition to a building or a new building in that area, that would be a concern. The zoning code and building codes do allow remodeling of existing buildings, structures, without having to make any additional, address any additional requirements of the floodplain. The only thing is that they can't store hazardous materials or petroleum-based products in that floodplain. So anything associated with the vehicle display, sales, and repair would have to be along those lines, it has to be located out of the floodplain. Petitioner's currently working with Building Services and zoning to make sure that that would be the case. We don't think there should be a problem with that. I'm sure that there are technically ways to do that, to handle that process. The other issue would be the parking. There was a variance granted for a previous use, which was a church. Perhaps some of you saw that application when it came through. They had to get a variance for parking to locate a church inside that same building. The church didn't go in. They did get the variance for the parking, but the church did not go in. Of course, that was required a whole lot more parking than what automobile display and sales would require. So we're sure that the parking requirements can be worked out with zoning and building services when they come in for their change in use. Other than that, all of the conditions for the application submit will have been provided. Signage is not, new signage is not indicated as far as freestanding goes. They do intend at some time in the future to put additional signage on the west wall facing the interstate, which would be allowed and as long as they meet the size requirements established in that C2 zoning district. The approved conditional use would be effective only if there is a variance in parking requirements approved, if that is required. And so staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit as presented. And that concludes staff report. We have had several calls wondering what's going on there, and I think it's mostly from realtors who deal with properties along Carolin Avenue, saw the signs, and just wondered what was happening.
Any questions, Steve?
Madam Chair, just a question on your comments on the floodplain. Is the project to raise the dike on 21st Street Bridge, will that?
That would take care of the situation, yes. But that's in the future, some ways into the future. In the meantime, we have to abide by the requirements of the federal government on that.
Madam Chair, again, Steve, run me through what part of the, is it below the floodplain?
The floor elevation.
The whole thing is.
The whole thing.
And did you say six feet or six inches?
Six feet.
And can they get away from the requirement of hazardous chemicals in the floodplain by physically elevating the tanks, et cetera?
Yep. They don't, is that my understanding, they don't intend to put in a pit in the repair area. They don't do pits anymore. They do elevators, you know, to get the vehicles up.
Keep going.
One more. Parking of 44 spaces shown in the plan, the church that asked and was approved but didn't go in, okay. What is the next step they need to take to get the, to get the 44 spaces approved?
Okay. The parking, when they come in for their change in use, they will have to negotiate the parking requirements because the overall parking requirements, conventional parking requirements for a multi-tenant facility are quite large. What they have in there is, are different uses. They have a warehouse use, they have a repair use, and they have a display showroom. So really, all they're concerned about is the customers that would be coming to the showroom. And zoning in the past has been willing to negotiate parking requirements on the basis of use, not just because it's that big a building in a C2 district. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions, Steve? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
Craig Lloyd, Lloyd Companies, 13130 West 57th Street, Suite 112. Couple of the issues that were brought up is on the parking, we went back and re-looked at our parking plan according to my architect. Oh, that's my disclaimer. We got now 101 spaces required, and we have 106 provided. So I don't, I got this this afternoon, and I don't know if Stephen had a chance to look at it. So I think we'll meet all the parking requirements, they've got to be there. We also will go to Board of Adjustments on the oil storage. If not, we'll have to put it on some stands, but they've given it to Walmart and they've given it to Sturtevant's Auto just recently. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Craig? Thank you, Craig.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak on this item? I'll look for Commission action on item number 16.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of item 16. I'll second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Excuse me. All those in favor of supporting item number 16 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item number 16 carries. Item number 17, conditional use permit in C4 Plan Commercial District.
Good evening again. The application has just indicated it's a conditional use permit. There's several different things that are involved with this application because of the large nature of the project. The- Um, the, the actual, uh, conditional use permit is to allow development of a site greater than an acre, construction of a retail building greater than fifteen thousand square feet, off-sale alcohol within five hundred feet of a school, a full-service restaurant within one hundred feet of residential uses, and construction of a gas dispensing station and car wash. The applicant is John Brem with Hy-Vee Incorporated, and the owner of the site currently is Chuck Moss, and I believe both are here tonight. Uh, the general location is at six thousand South Cliff Avenue, which is the northeast corner of South Cliff Avenue and E sixty-ninth Street. The area of the parcel is, uh, seventeen point seven acres in size and the existing zoning is C4 for the actual development of this with a couple of, uh, areas of office also included in the site overall. Now, as we reference the compatibility chart again, uh, you'll notice that to the north and to the west, we've got residential uses which merit a rating, a compatibility rating of three, which means that the proposed use may have potential conflicts with the existing adjacent uses, which can be remedied or minimized through project design. As I go through the staff report, I'll talk about what the applicant has done to, to, uh, mitigate some of those impacts. Now, the conditional use permit standards that you'll be evaluating this project on are sixfold, as I've referenced earlier. The first is retailing, which covers the first two, and that they, retailing should be designed in a fashion that will minimize a large amount of parking required on the site, and that the uses will be encouraged to provide a safe and convenient pedestrian circulation pattern through the parking lot and to develop this attractive sign package. Off-sale alcohol beverage establishments, the, the condition should be that the location is compatible with characteristics of surrounding uses and not injurious to surrounding properties, and that a management plan be provided to address operational security issues, including employee training and supervision of customers. Full-service restaurant, there's four items there that should be considered, and one is a menu depicting food items that are available, hours of operation, a security management plan, and a floor plan depicting the dining area, kitchen facilities and separate incidental area for alcohol service and consumption. The gas dispensing station should be looked at, uh, in the terms of the traffic being stacked on-site. That landscaping should be placed in such a way to minimize the impact of the gasoline pumps, and that the gas pumps and island should be located more than twelve feet from the nearest property line. And finally, for the car wash, the car wash should be constructed to provide sufficient room for stacking, adequate but not excessive access to the site, and an acceptable method to reduce water runoff from the site. Special consideration should be given to screening the car wash from the site. Now, as I mentioned, the location is at the northeast corner of E sixty-ninth Street and South Cliff Avenue, and the applicant has shown plans to plat the subject property into about four lots. The gas station and car wash will be located on Lot Two, the grocery stores will be located on Lot Three, and then Lots One and Four are to remain undeveloped at this time and are currently zoned, and those are the sites that are zoned office right now. So those would probably develop as office uses in the future. The, um, existing corridor development planet, pattern is a limited access arterial. Both South Cliff Avenue and E sixty-ninth to the west have developed residential uses in large concentrations against the arterials. And in, and in addressing the proximity to parks, open space and schools, you'll note that the future Judy Park lies within five hundred feet to the northwest of the site, and the University of Sioux Falls Sports Complex is within five hundred feet to the south. Sioux Falls Christian School, just for reference, is approximately eight hundred feet to the east. The, um, signage plan that was provided is details that the proposed building signs have been provided and conformed to standards that are described by our, by chapter fifteen fifty-seven of the zoning ordinance. And the applicant has also indicated that only one freestanding monument sign will be placed, and that's for the gas dispensing station. There will not, at this time, be plans for a, uh, separate monument sign for the, for Hy-Vee itself. Um, as far as the landscaping plan is concerned, the site requires a total of seventy-seven trees based upon four hundred and sixty-three total parking stalls. The applicant has provided seventy-six new deciduous trees and intends to preserve at least one of the existing trees on-site. Um, and in, in addition, the landscaping plan indicates that fifty-one coniferous trees will be provided on-site to serve as buffer on the north and east property lines. Now, that references, and that goes back to some of the things that we talked about when we're talking about the compatibility rating. And in fact, as, as to how the applicant has addressed the potential impact to residential uses, he's provided, uh, line of coniferous trees on the north side that would provide that buffer that, that we would be typically looking for. Now, just as, to sum up the project, the applicant is proposing to construct a large grocery store that could be up to one hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet in size and a convenience store with gas pumps and a car wash on an outlot. Site's currently zoned appropriately for the uses as shown, but planning commission approval of a conditional use permit's required. And in this instance, six different land use standards require a conditional use permit, and all can be acted simultaneously by this one motion and application. The site's, again, adjacent to multifamily residential projects to the north and west, and the applicants, in our opinion, have taken care to ensure that a buffer will be provided along the north property line to help mitigate impacts from the proposed use. And to explain the alcohol law more, the applicant has requested approval of two alcohol uses, one being for off-sale within five hundred feet of a school, which references, which goes back to the University of Sioux Falls Sports Complex lying to the south. And the, in addition, the store will need approval as a full-service restaurant in order to be able to provide wine tasting events. Full-service restaurants are required to obtain conditional use permits when located within one hundred feet of residential uses, and in the past, Hy-Vee has applied for and received approval for these uses at other Sioux Falls locations. The applicant should work with the Community Service Division of the Police Department and develop a security management plan. And overall, the applicant has generally met the conditional use permit standards as previously described and provides adequate screening and buffering from the street right-of-way and residential uses. A landscape schedule delineating an exact species of trees has not yet been developed, and the applicant should be aware that staff discourages the use of ash trees and encourages diversity in the selection of trees on-site. So because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature and extent of the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, we are recommending approval of the conditional use with six conditions. The first being that a security management plan approv, is approved by the Sioux Falls Police Department. The second is approval of alcohol-related land uses are valid for this applicant only, which would be Hy-Vee Incorporated. The three, no ash trees and ash varieties shall be used to meet minimum landscaping requirements. Four, approval of the landscaping plan as submitted, which would, which would firm up the buffers that, that we were looking for. Five, any future freestanded signage located adjacent to or across from residential uses shall be monument style, no greater than eight feet in height. And finally, a sidewalk and or crosswalk shall be installed from the sixty-ninth Street right-of-way to the front entrance of the grocery store. Now, we've received no phone calls on this application and/or any comments received by our office. I do know that the applicants have conducted a neighborhood meeting, and to our understanding, the response was generally positive, and they are here to be able to address that. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Madam Chair, Dave, a question. You talked about Zone One and Zone Four. Zone One is in the northwest corner.
Okay.
Which will remain vacant, you said?
Yep.
And then Zone, I believe it's Zone Four will be in the, on the, on the eastern side.
That's correct.
Is, i, in my drawing, is, is that an easement that goes through there?
Uh, I believe there are some utility easements in there, yeah.
Okay.
So those would have to be addressed, and they won't be able to build the building on top of it, other steps of them.
Yep, understand. Um, also, uh, Dave, I appreciate your, um, tree selection recommendation within your, uh...
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions to Dave? Nope. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, member of, of the commission. My name is John Brem, uh, with Hy-Vee, fifty-eight twenty, West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to add to Dave's, uh, presentation, other than I would add that we did hold a neighborhood meeting approximately two weeks ago, and we had, I'd say a dozen or two dozen people show up. Uh, we held it open house style and answered questions. Uh, most of the people that came to it were, had either questions or they were excited about the project and just wanted to see what was going on. Uh, the other thing I would add is that, uh, Hy-Vee has no, uh, problems with the staff comments as, uh, listed. They're important. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions at this point.
Any questions to John?
Madam Chair? John?
Yes.
Um, you understand the, um, conditions that are on the, on the, uh, approval recommendation?
Yes.
That they've showed?
Yes.
Perfect. And we appreciate you having those neighborhood meetings to get the word out and, uh, address any concerns up front. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
So John, what's the plan? When are you going to turn that first shovel?
Right now, uh, the, the property is under option. Um, everything comes through okay. Uh, we plan a closing on it right now. This is part of our due diligence work. Um, project is, we're basically getting this together for a future project, so there's no immediate plans to build the store, um, after completion of this, but this is, uh, part of the steps we need to go through before acquiring the property.
Thank you.
John, it's kind of exciting. Looks like an exciting project. I'm like Jesse, we'd like to see it get started tomorrow.
Your Kenny's neighbor over there.
We've had a lot of similar comments from the neighbors as well.
Welcome aboard. I hope everything goes well for you.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet.
I too would just like to add my five cents to this. I know a lot of people out in that area who are very excited about this. So I think you'll do really well there.
Thank you.
It's a great location.
If you have problems with Chuck, just let us know.
Yeah.
Will do. Appreciate that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to comment on item number seventeen? I don't think anybody dares after that. I'll look for commission action on item number seventeen.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the, uh, item sixteen with the, um, conditions as stated.
I second that. Item's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Item number seventeen carries. Thank you. Item number eighteen is a conditional use permit in the RS2 residential district.
The applicant has been before you before, um, a couple of months before. The applicant's Clint Ackerman with Southeastern Developers, represented here tonight by Paul Westra. Uh, the conditional use permit is a, is in, in the RS2 is to construct two-family residential buildings. The area in question is four acres and, uh, along South, Southeastern Avenue and East Buckingham Street. As we look at the compatibility again, um, to the north, we have single-family residential. To the south, um, in your staff report, you'll see that it says future single-family residential. But if you remember correctly, a month ago, you approved a major amendment to the Whisper Ridge Plan Development District that would allow up to four plaques development, um, right along the south side. That, that major amendment was approved by the city council on Monday night, so that, so there could be the potential for four-unit residential buildings to the south on this property. And to the east, you'll have future two-family residential, and to the west, single-family residential. All of these land uses can, um, have a compatibility rating of four, which means that the new zoning district is generally compatible with the just, uh, existing adjacent zoning district, and that traffic from higher intensity districts should be directed away from the lower den, lowered intensity districts. We don't think that that will be an issue with this, uh, application. Now, the conditional use permit standard that you'll be looking at is for dwellings, and dwellings should be located in areas where they're compatible with adjacent uses with regard to traffic, size, density and other significant factors. Uh, again, the location is along South Southeastern Avenue and East Buckingham Drive in the Oxford Estates addition. And some of the comments that we've received are that the traffic engineers should, that, from the traffic engineering is that the applicant, um, should work with the developers to the property to the south to ensure that, uh, Kensington Avenue is completed, connecting the two developments, uh, for traffic flow through the, through them. In analyzing the application, the applicant is requesting approval for development of two-family residential buildings. This is a revised request from one that you might remember that was deferred by the planning commission in February twenty-ten. The applicant subsequently withdrew the request late, at, at a later time while he worked on a revised plan, and this was, this is the plan that has been provided to us. The area, the area in requested is significantly smaller and is only for the lots on the south side of the future East Buckingham Street. This request represents a decrease of two point one seven acres in five lots from the previous request. So the, the request coincides with the recent recommendation of approval of the increase in density of the Whisper Trail Plan Development District to the south, and as I noted, the city council approved that major amendment on Monday. But because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit. That concludes staff report. We, uh, to add, we have not received any phone calls from the neighbors at this location.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
Any questions to Dave?
Madam Chair, David, I can remember, I can't remember us deferring this before. I can remember it being withdrawn.
It was deferred, uh, just some of the neighbors had some concerns about the application before and, and in order to address and, and believe that they, um, hadn't...
Doesn't matter, I just, I can remember it being withdrawn, I couldn't remember it.
Yeah, no, um, it, it was deferred by the commission, and then while they, while they tried to work out a new plan, they withdrew the application and they provided this new one to you. So, from our standpoint, you know, you've got a land use transition that goes from single-family to two-family to four-family, so that's the basis upon which we recommended approval of this site.
Thank you, David. Any other questions to Dave? No? Is the petitioner here?
Hi, Paul Westra at fifty-one oh eight South Wells Avenue in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I represent Signature Companies.
Any questions to Paul?
Play it backwards, Paul. Refresh my memory, I can't remember.
You what?
Well, I can't remember what happened back then.
Yeah, I think you were on vacation, 'cause, um...
[laughing]
There's, there's another gentleman that was sitting there that night, and I can't remember who it was.
It was Meredith.
Yeah, it was Meredith, yeah.
I was on vacation, too.
You were on vacation, too.
[laughing]
That was back in February. And we, what, what had happened is we had not had, um, a, oh, I don't know, an official neighborhood meeting, and so we withdrew it, met with the neighbors, uh, we met with sixteen of the neighbors, and between the sixteen neighbors and Clint and myself, we became, or we came up with this plan instead. And we pulled it off of where we were going to originally go on Southeastern there, just above the number seven to, uh, Kensington, decided to put single-family in there and then bring these down on the south edge of the property and run them there to the west and east. So, and we had a meeting with the neighbors and they all agreed that that would be okay.
Very good, Paul. Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? No? Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item? No? Okay. I'll look for commission action on item number eighteen.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of item number eighteen.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen?
Nineteen is, uh, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls to correct clerical errors in ordinance number one oh nine dash oh nine, and you have the ordinance, the proposed ordinance in front of you, but I did want to reference exactly what that was referring to, uh, just so you, just so you had a clue. If you remember, a couple of months ago, you approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would allow for exemptions to the final development plan process that would include things like neigh, like community centers, development, you know, schools and churches and things like that. So, um, it was just a couple of typos that ended up in that ordinance, and so that's what we're looking to fix with this. That concludes our report.
Okay.
We haven't received calls on that.
[laughing] Any questions for Dave? No? Okay. Anybody from the audience want to talk about this one? No? Okay. I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I move we approve, um, item nineteen as stated by Dave.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? No? Item number nineteen carries. Item number twenty.
Move for adjournment.
Second that.
Okay.